Colleague Marquise Harris-Dawson is on his way, but we should probably get started. So, we're going to begin with item number one.
Item number one, Personnel Department report relative to the City of Los Angeles, Plan Year 2017 Civilian Flexible Benefits Program.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Wendy Macy with the Personnel Department. With me is Stephen Montagna, who's our Chief of our Benefits Division. I also want to acknowledge that we have a couple of members of our Joint Labor Management Benefits Committee with us. We have Ramon Rivocava and Chris Hannan are here, and we're expecting Ms. Peruzzi to join us shortly. We're presenting our 2017 Flex Benefits Program, and I first just want to acknowledge the PAU Committee, because a lot of work has gone into our Request for Proposal process culminating in this, a lot of staff work and a lot of committee work, but a lot of it emanated from some direction that it came from this committee, asking us to really look into our member feedback and our member needs. And so, you may recall that we then did focus groups as well as surveys, which helped us to craft the Request for Proposals and identify really the needs that our employees and their families were identifying in terms of their health and their dental and their vision benefits. And so, we're very proud to say that we were able to negotiate some substantial enhancements to our benefits that the city employees will really greatly benefit from as a result of this process. Stephen will walk you through the details, but there are some innovative programs that are being introduced for this year, and in a very cost-effective way. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to Stephen.
Thank you. Okay, so, actually, if you want to look at page two of the report that we submitted, what you'll see is sort of, in broad terms, an overview of what the 2017 Flex Plan Design looks like. At the top of the page are the programs that will be included, that are recommended to be included, and then at the bottom, we've just given some highlights of what the most significant changes are, and those are the ones that I'll walk through and then kind of, you know, turn it over to questions. So, first off, the first major change is that we will be introducing a new regional network plan options for our membership. So, this is not an option that will replace any of the current options, so our members will still have access to their PPO plan, to the full network plan, the narrow network plan, and also the staff model Kaiser Plan. All those options will remain intact, but this new regional network will give our members access to a new, a number of various hospital systems that may be viewed by the membership as, you know, these are hospital systems that they would highly regard and want to see the providers. And what's unusual about this, and what we think is extremely positive, is that this, that the premium level for this new option is actually going to be the least expensive of all the plan options. Now, it is going to be limited to residents of Los Angeles and Orange Counties, so it's not intended, as I mentioned before, to replace any of the current menu, but for those people that do live in those areas and might be attracted to one or more of the hospital systems that are part of this, this could be an option that they would be interested The next change that we mentioned here is we're, from our health plans in particular, we're going to be introducing member advocacy resources. And what this means is we are going to have the health plans come on-site, have members that are basically working out of our office on the eighth floor, and will be there Monday through Friday, so that our members, if they're having issues, they have concerns, they need information, they'll be able to see a representative from the health plans in person, and this is something that kind of follows the model of something we're already doing with the deferred compensation plan, where that kind of an in-person, high-touch resource has been in existence since the program's inception in 1984, so we're really trying to build on what we think is, you know, best practice for people to be able to access information. The next change is we are going to be increasing the benefit levels with the dental PPO plan. So, there are three areas where the benefit levels will be increasing. The first is that the annual maximum benefit for those members who are seeing, who might be seeing out-of-network providers will be increased from $1,250 to $1,500 per year. That will put them on par with the annual maximum for the in-network. We are also going to be, we're also going to be waiving the application of the cost of any preventive services towards the annual maximum. So, what that does, the net effect of that is to really, to increase by a much larger margin the annual maximum for the membership. And then, the last change is to increase the reasonable, the reimbursement that comes from the reasonable and customary from the 50th to the 90th percentile, which will be, will also help the members, the members of the PPO plan, which I should add, they represent about two-thirds of the total enrollment within the dental plan. Moving on to vision, we're very excited by this new offering, so the vision benefit has always been historically bundled within the health plans, and we are going to be unbundling that and working with a standalone vision provider, and we will be able to significantly increase the benefit level, so whereas right now, you get about $130 to $100 vision benefit every two years, that's going to increase, and so now you'll get a new benefit level every year. So, what that effectively means is that we've been able to double the vision benefit, but at the same premium level, so there's no increase in costs. Also, this vision provider is going to be, they'll have a wide network of areas where people can go to get their eyewear, but they'll also be offering pop-up clinics, which means that they'll come on-site, and members will be able to do their eye exams on-site, they'll also be able to choose the eyewear that they'd be interested in on-site, and then this provider will, is also going to be delivering this to the individual, so it's very high-touch. And then, the last piece I just wanted to mention before closing is that we are working on a rebranding of the Flex Benefits Program to really incorporate wellness. So, wellness is the other big program under development for next year, and we want to integrate what's going to be, what we hope to include within the wellness program into the overall benefit design, so that our members can really see the connection between those two, and they can, you know, the messaging that we want to send out to our employees is really that we support them and that these resources are there to support them wherever they may be at on their healthcare journeys.
And for the record, we've been joined by my colleague, Marquise Harris-Dawson. Got a few questions. First of all, the plan that deals with, and welcome, Ms. Peruzzi, with the benefits from UCLA and Cedar Sinai, which is a rare opportunity, we've had back and forth over whether we could find ways to cover employees that had doctors at those facilities, et cetera. This plan almost sounds too good to be true, because it seems to offer better benefits and a better plan, and cost less to the folks that want to go to the best hospitals and systems in the city. How does that work? Is there something they don't get? Is there anything that's been removed from those benefits?
No, there's not, and we do have, we do have some premium security in that there will be rate guarantees that will be part of the contract, so that doesn't mean that the costs, the costs of the premiums will necessarily go up by a certain amount, but it does place limits on those, and so that does give us, you know, some way to manage that within the first years of the contract. And we, you know, this is certainly something that was considered by the JL NBC and was a point of concern. I think it's something that we'll be closely monitoring to see what the utilization is, what our experience is, and really, if this ends up, you know, being able to deliver everything that we certainly hope it will.
And do we have any sense of why the generosity? Is it partly because, are there efficiencies in just creating the group of networks and having better communications between them? Is it because it's somewhat of a pilot program for them, and they like to have the City of Los Angeles on it, and it gives that advantage to them, so they're willing to cut us some slack in terms of the benefits? Do we have a sense of why that works?
Well, you know, one thing to remember is that these hospital systems really kind of organized themselves and went to Anthem, and we're really trying to create, to create a product that they thought would be competitive for this market. So, there has been a lot that those systems have invested, so as an example, in, you know, trying to build a medical information platform, so that if the member goes to one facility and then, you know, goes to another facility, that they're not having to recreate new records for that individual. So, I do think that is part of creating the product. They have, they have looked to create something that would be sustainable and is going to meet their, to meet the objective that they have of being competitive.
Well, if it works as well as it looks on paper, I'm very excited that we have that offering in the city. As far as dental, I know we, in our surveys, we probably found one of our highest levels of dissatisfaction was with the dental benefits. So, I know we've moved gently in the right direction. Did we have any ability to increase our premiums a little bit more and get more significantly better dental benefits? I know we've moved in the right direction in terms of people that aren't in the network. We've moved in the right direction in terms of the percentages, but we still have a cap that's pretty low. And how do our unions respond and our employees respond to that? I know personally, it's very easy to exceed that cap and not really feel like you get much coverage.
Well, on that specific question, I mean, I think the other significant change was that the traditional preventative care is not costed against the cap, and so that really is, number one, a real incentive for, you know, all of our members and employees to, you know, engage in the preventative care, and then if problems ensue, then those are not counted against the cap, and so I think that, so the real dollar value of the cap is greatly enhanced. So, there are three ways in which that cap value is enhanced, is the not costing the preventative care against it, and then increasing the amount of, you know, the percentage of usual and customary that will get paid. So, I think for all, you know, for those reasons, I think it's a significant advantage. You know, there's a balancing act that needs to go on, because the city only pays for single-party, and so we don't want, we don't want the cost to get too high, so that employees are opting out of the plans or not covering family members, et cetera. So, there was a bit of a balancing act that was part of the consideration in terms of raising the premiums too high.
And with such a low cost, that it's hard to imagine that employees at this level would be, would be priced out of the market. If they could have moved it up just a little bit and gotten some better benefits, I don't know if that was available to us.
Well, it wasn't exactly cost-neutral. There was, there was a modest cost increase to secure these enhancements, but again, it was the balance that we attempted to achieve in terms of not raising it too high, but there was a slight cost increase.
I mean, it seems like we actually gained in the process. If you compare the improvement in benefits to the cost increase, I think it was a very positive change. I would have liked to see it be more positive, but I think we're at least close enough to the edge that, you know, I wouldn't object strenuously to it. And so, that's a plus on the dental. On the medical, also the fact that we will actually have people here to answer questions and deal with problems, because we did run into a number of people that had problems that were never really resolved appropriately. This seems like a more opportune way to do it. They literally can have a meeting with somebody, they can't wriggle off the hook and not return phone calls, and they're right there, so I think that's a real positive as well. As far as the vision, how's that work with Kaiser? Does Kaiser still offer vision also, or is that removed from their part of the plan?
So, members can still go to Kaiser for an eye exam, but if, but they, if they want to get their eyewear from Kaiser, they would be treated, they'd be treated as an out-of-network provider. So, the member has the option. They can go to Kaiser, get their eyewear, get reimbursed at the out-of-network level, or they can go to IMED, which is the recommended vendor here, and they can get the full value of the benefit by using IMED exclusively. They can also go to IMED to get their vision exam. So, really, the vision exam portion of it, that's not being taken away. The members always have the ability to go to the health plans for that exam.
And were there, back to the overall process, were there problems that members identified that weren't addressed in any of these changes? How on target were we in terms of responding to the surveys?
You know, I think we were, we were highly responsive. This would be regarded as highly responsive to the concerns. I think where there's ongoing work to be done lies in the area of improving communications and really helping people to navigate what is this kind of inherent complexity of how the benefits work. You know, people get confused, they don't typically need to be, you know, really engaged with it all the time unless there's some major issue going on. So, I think where we want to work with all of the service providers is really looking for ways that we can help to simplify information. I mean, that's part of the value of having the member advocates is really, you know, it's at least one effort that we've made to be more high-touch, but I think there are additional, there's additional work that we're going to be looking to do next year.
And on wellness programs, I know Kaiser, at least at one point, was not willing to participate. Have we made any progress? Are we still negotiating with them to get them on-board with the wellness piece, which in theory seems like it's on-target with a lot of their marketing? So, the question is, do we get there in reality?
We are currently in the process of negotiating with them. They have made some movement off of what they originally proposed in the RFP, so that's a positive indicator. I'm not sure that we will get to the same level of wellness contribution this year that we're receiving from Anthem, but I do think that we can probably do that in the next contract years, so we are continuing to work on that.
And hopefully, if it's done right and it's as successful as we hope, it almost winds up being kind of a freebie from the company, because if we get reduced health problems as a result of focusing on wellness, it could be a break-even or even better. So, I would think we should, we should push that argument with Kaiser especially to get them more involved. Mr. Harris-Dawson, do you have any questions to? Well, I think everything has been done well. I appreciate the good work of JL NBC and Personnel and responsiveness to the surveys, and I would move that we move this forward without objection. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, item number two.
Item number two, Department of Animal Services report response to motion Busciano Corretz relative to the Coyote Management Program.
And do we have staff here to give us a report on this subject?
Good morning. Derek Brown, Assistant General Manager, Operations, L.A. Animal Services. I'd like to introduce our Wildlife Officer, Officer Din. Officer Din is a big part of our program, and he is exceptionally qualified to be our In response to a motion dated May 24th, the department was directed to provide a report to the committee on the department's Coyote Management Program, the resources currently developed to implement the program, and recommendations to improve the program to further control the coyote population, including any ordinance or city policy that will support the effort. I'd like to talk a little about coyotes. They're highly adaptable and opportunistic. The average size of coyotes in our area is between 20 to 30 pounds, with males being larger. California Fish and Wildlife estimates there are 750,000 coyotes in California. Their range extends throughout the state, including into population centers like Los Angeles. Among wildlife agencies such as California Fish and Wildlife and National Park Services, there is consensus that there is no scientific evidence that the number of coyotes in the community has increased. Rather, what all agencies have experienced is an increase in calls attributed to an increase in social media. One coyote may generate as many as 20 calls and multiple agencies receiving the same call or out-of-state calls. Coyotes do not target humans as prey. Rather, they see them as a source of food, cover, and water. However, small pets and children have to be watched. Occasional attacks by coyotes on pets and coyote aggression towards people, although rare, can trigger alarm from people who fear for the safety of their pets and children. They breed from December to February and raise pups in the spring. This and other factors such as new construction and drought can lead to an increase in activity and sightings of coyotes, including daytime hour sightings. In July 2015, the general manager released a tip sheet on how to exist with coyotes. In that, she stated that, if accurate, it may be reflective of the drought, but she's starting to think that people may be making it easier for coyotes to get food, or they may have simply adapted to urban living and lost their traditional fear of humans becoming habituated. The Humane Society of the United States agrees that the killing and removal of coyotes is ineffective, that the wary nature of coyotes and their remarkable adaptability has allowed them to quadruple their range throughout North America. Trapping is extremely difficult to do, it's indiscriminate, and there is no way to ensure that the problem-causing coyote will be the ones trapped and killed. If attractants in the neighborhood are not removed, such as pet food, garbage, bird feeders, compost, and wood piles, an area can quickly become, a coyote can quickly become a nuisance in an area. To allay this fear, some communities feel the need to initiate wide-scale programs to trap and kill coyotes, but these programs don't work and are inhumane. The department does not advocate lethal management. The source of the problem is not the presence of wildlife, but rather the environment that humans provide for them as we provide them with food, water, and cover, either inadvertently or by design. Our previous Wildlife Division operated with two ACOs, and one of those ACOs is currently out, so we do have one dedicated animal control officer. It's important to note that while we have one dedicated Wildlife Officer, all of our ACOs may be called upon to assist with any wildlife and are trained to do so. The department provides wildlife program information to the public on the website, along with informational brochures and contact information focusing on coyote management information. Our staff research other agency management plans, and the information these programs provide does appear to be compatible with the department's wildlife program and current practices. The department's program is also enhanced by having an ACO that's dedicated to the wildlife concerns. We found that most other agencies do not have a dedicated Wildlife Officer. When the district receives a call for a coyote acting aggressively towards a person or animal, the call is treated like any other dangerous animal call. It's a priority two out of 19 on our list. An ACO is dispatched immediately. If the attack was on a human, California Department of Fish and Wildlife is immediately notified, along with LAPD. When the officer arrives and the incident is over, the information is sent to the department's Wildlife Officer for follow-up. Once the ACO assigned to Wildlife receives the information, the call is set up for a follow-up callback to the person reporting the incident for more details about what occurred. An investigation is conducted to determine why the attack took place, and recommendations are made to prevent future incidents. Officers log the activity into our data management system and sets up random patrols to see if that coyote can be found. This would only occur if the coyote was not captured or killed at the time of the attack. In most cases, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife will conduct their own separate investigation. The department's Wildlife Officer will assist with the investigation. The department follows state guidelines regarding wildlife. If we receive a call about a sighting only, the person is referred to the department's wildlife phone number, and also the ACO assigned to Wildlife contacts the person to obtain more information and directs them to information over the phone or through the website, or arranges a community meeting to address wildlife issues. Also, patrols are set up, and if a feeder of wildlife is observed, all of our officers, including the Wildlife Officer, can issue a citation which carries a minimum fine of $100. If an animal is observed to be sick or injured, arrangements to trap the coyote are put in place. If the animal, if the animal's condition warrants, then it would be humanely euthanized, or if it's not so severe, it could be sent to a licensed rehabber. We also have a SMART team, which also can assist with the capture of coyotes when they're severely injured. It's our specialized mobile animal rescue team, and a recent case was where a coyote was caught with an illegal leg-hole trap and chewed its leg off to escape. We deployed the SMART team along with our Wildlife Officer, however, we were unable to trap the animal. The Wildlife Officer works closely with other agencies, as mentioned, including Park Rangers, California Fish and Wildlife, and the department has began a Wildlife Watch Program in which it's similar to a Neighborhood Watch Program, and it involves educating the community and getting information and feedback from the community about wildlife issues. One recent study showed that the stomach contents of seven urban coyotes that were tested had a majority of man-made processed foods in their system. The department's Wildlife Officer continues to be involved and informed of research and data from these agencies and shares this with the public. In 2015, we developed, along with California Fish and Wildlife, the Wildlife Watch Program. It's similar to Neighborhood Watch. It involves the community to be additional eyes and ears and provides them hands-on skills for identifying and addressing wildlife in the neighborhood. It provides a direct working relationship. It provides a direct working relationship with all of the departments involved. The program better prepares residents for realistic expectations and training. It builds on community trust while we all work towards developing a more informed community with regard to wildlife, the do's and don'ts which will help keep wildlife from wanting to enter the residential neighborhoods. Until 1994, the city regularly trapped and shot coyotes. This was stopped after public outcry and studies that concluded that kill programs were ineffective and expensive. Relocation isn't an option, as it is legal under state law to relocate coyotes once trapped. Coyotes removed from an area will quickly be replaced by others, creating a vacuum effect. Instead, we advise keeping an eye on pets, securing possible food sources like animal feeding or garbage, and we encourage people to haze coyotes when they see them by making loud noises and threatening gestures toward the animal, but to never corner or make contact with the animal. Feeding a wild predator carries $100 minimum fine. As mentioned before, all of our animal control officers can cite for this offense. ACOs assigned to work to wildlife work closely with California Fish and Wildlife and other agencies to share the data that helps with understanding coyote behavior in an urban setting. Our program, it involves the community to be active, participants becoming additional eyes and ears, as mentioned, and the ability to address wildlife in their neighborhoods. The department recommends that the best approach to responsible coyote management is ongoing education on how to coexist with indigenous wildlife, and recommends that city purchase wildlife-proof trash containers for parks and public areas where coyotes frequent. Also, increase signage, warning people not to feed coyotes. The department shares lawful means that can be taken to remove coyotes, including hiring a private licensed and permitted trapper, or the department and other agencies agree that removing coyotes from their natural indigenous area is not a long-term solution and will create a vacuum effect, meaning other coyotes will move into the area and could trigger larger litter births and earlier breeding. Coyotes are an important, integral part of our ecosystem, biosphere, and the circle of life. We believe that awareness through education is the key in resolving conflicts with wildlife. Any questions?
So, how do we compare to other cities that have successful programs? Have we looked at Calabasas and other places that are generally considered to operate with best practices to see whether there are things we can learn from them?
Our program is consistent with other management programs. The thing that I think separates our program and really provides a more of a comprehensive approach is the fact that we have a dedicated Wildlife Officer who really loves what he does and is a real great educator and really enthusiastic about what he does and a very professional animal control officer. So, our program actually involves all of that information, education. We have a hotline. We have an email, and we're able to respond directly to the community. We also do onsite visits where we'll actually come out and conduct an assessment and assist residents directly with issues.
And I know we, from our experience, we know, and not that I would want to see us do this anyway, that we can't really kill our way out of this problem, which is why we abandoned that policy years ago. But when people have serious problems and we don't handle it that way, they feel like we're not doing enough and we're not really supportive enough of their problems. So, how do we get that message out that there are best practices, we're here to help, and we're not just sitting on our hands and saying, okay, coyotes can run wild, and not take into account the problems they're causing?
Right. It's a difficult issue, and we certainly understand residents who feel that way. However, like I said, we are able to come out and actually make an assessment of that individual property and really give them some tools and effective resources that would apply to their specific situation. For example, in some cases, they're called coyote rollers that you can install at the top of your fence, which prevents them from being able to jump the fence and hop into yards. A lot of times, too, residents are unaware that they're inadvertently attracting coyotes. So, when we're able to go through the assessment, sometimes they're really surprised that something like a bird feeder in a backyard could be attracting rodents, which could then trigger an attraction to the coyote. So, we have a consistent message. It conforms with the best practices of other agencies, as well as the one you mentioned, Calabasas. And in addition, we also have our dedicated Wildlife Officer.
Mr. Harris Dawson, anything to add, any questions?
So, it seems like it's quite a bit of education for folks who have to do coyote, sort of the coexistence with coyotes. Could you talk for a second about how, what sections of the city you guys get the most complaints from, sort of how big those areas are and how many residents are impacted?
Yeah. Well, the area is huge. Any area, it's amazing that the area can be as developed as West Los Angeles, for example. We've got coyotes that come all the way down to Chevyet Hills. We've got the Veterans Administration over there, which is a big open space. So, anywhere that there's open spaces, but also in dense urban areas, they're able to take cover. And we come across dens sometimes that are in, you know, areas that you wouldn't necessarily suspect. But recently, I know we've had a lot of activity down in San Pedro, and that might be an area that you wouldn't normally think of as having coyotes, but they certainly have a number of coyotes there. And I understand that there's recent demolition and construction at one of the bases down there, which could also impact the number of coyote sightings and their activity. So, certainly, new construction, drought conditions, displacement, and breeding season and things like that really add to the activity level of the coyotes. But they're virtually in every community, every city throughout the United States pretty much has coyotes, and a lot of people aren't aware of that.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that either. And so, in terms of your outreach, how do you, how is outreach being conducted? In other words, how are we being aggressive about making sure the message gets to people? And I just, I would add as anecdotally, before you answer, there's almost no neighborhood council or community meeting I go to in my district, and I represent, I mean, I represent South L.A. Like, it's, the beach isn't closed, those forests, there's no forest closed, there's, you know, it's all urban. But almost every neighborhood has a problem with coyotes in the center of the city. And so, I'm just wondering how broadly you all do outreach, how you do outreach, and how you evaluate that?
The way we do the outreach is Officer Din actually conducts community meetings. And as mentioned, we have the Wildlife Watch Program. And the way that works, it really empowers and educates the community members to be part of the solution. And we conduct those community meetings and set up the Wildlife Watch Programs where we'll have like a captain and people designated. We'll have reporting practices in place. So, the reporting is really important because it gives us data and feedback on the activity level and what's going on in the community. But that's really an, that's probably the cornerstone of our education program besides the website, because it's really hands-on. The officer comes out, and the community begins to really become educated and understand that we care and that we're responsive to their concerns. I actually live in your district, and something ironic-
Good, I was nice to you.
Well, something ironic happened to me last night. It's kind of funny that I've never had wildlife problems, and about 2:00 last night, the dogs began to go crazy, and I went outside to find that two coyote, not coyotes, I'm sorry, I've got coyote on the brain, two raccoons had actually broken into my patio. And I shined the flashlight, and their eyes are lighting up, and they were after the dog's food. But I thought it was so, such a good segue to come here today and have that happen, because really, the bottom line was, what were the raccoons attracted to? They were attracted to the dog food, right? And so, it's that type of education. You really have to reduce the attractants and things that would, you know, cause the coyotes to want to come into your property and those kind of things. But the education part is really critical. And I would add that even when we actively participated in trapping, the education was a big component that we stressed, because one of, I was a supervisor of one of the Wildlife Officers back in the 90s, and one of the things he would say is, we can never trap our way out of this issue, out of this problem. So, certainly, education is really the key here.
So, it would be great to know how many community meetings you've done, how many you all have planned, what the average attendance is, because maybe there can be some creativity about getting to people. Because I actually, our office didn't know that these sessions take place, as an example, so it would be great to be able to refer people to them. But, you know, sort of how many you've had, how many you intend to have, how do you get people to know about them, and how many people tend to show up?
But the participation's pretty active. When we go out into the community, like you mentioned, it's a widespread problem, and Officer Din does as many as he can possibly do. He's pretty busy and active, so he sets up as many community meetings. I don't have the number, but I could always provide you with that. The other thing that we're looking to do is to actually sort of train the trainer and have additional animal control officers be able to provide that same type of community meeting-based education in their particular districts to expand that program.
That's actually exactly something I was going to ask you about. You know, if you just have one person running around trying to cover the whole city, probably the focus is on areas where you've had complaints, because I've had hotspots, and then we've had community meetings, and we've had our expert come out and try to train people on what the best practices are, et cetera. But if you tried to get to every neighborhood council and homeowners association, I mean, in my district, I have close to 100. I could keep you busy the whole year just going to every one of my HOAs. Now, not everyone has the complaint. They may have the problem, but they're not reaching out to us. So, how do you get as far as you can now, and what's the plan to spread that out? Is it to fully educate to the same level all of our animal control officers and have them spread it out? Are we looking at getting another officer with a focus on wildlife, so we double our ability to get out with somebody that has a high level of expertise? What's the plan?
Could I add to your question? And maybe Officer Din could come up. You know, as a community organizer, I'm a big fan of sort of releasing the knowledge into the community and sort of deputizing people. I don't know if in other programs you all have a system where, you know, maybe every neighborhood council could have an animal control rep that gets trained on how to, you know, what people are supposed to do, and so that there's somebody actually in your neighborhood that you can call. I mean, most of, at least in my district, I can't speak for the city, but in most of my district, there's, you know, there are animal enthusiasts in every neighborhood of some kind, and it might be a way to spread the knowledge out and to take some of the load off of the staff, because running around the city is almost impossible.
Certainly. And Officer Din loves what he does. He's very dynamic. I can't say enough about him. What we've found is that through our program with the Wildlife Watch Program and educating the community, it begins to spread, and people within the community will often really, you know, pass it forward, the education, the experience, how they handled it, what they did. The other part about it is the website is really comprehensive in terms of the information that exists. And if you simply read that web, the website, it would answer probably the majority, if not all, of your questions and concerns, but there's nothing like that hands-on, community, you know, building and teamwork that exists when you do come out in the community. So, that's the wave of the future for us, and we intend to do everything possible to expand our capabilities. Like I mentioned, we do have two animal control officers dedicated, one of them being out on a long-term absence, but we certainly will consider all that we can do to expand our program, for sure.
I have at least one other question, and then, so we don't run out of time, I'll have our speakers heard as well. I had a suggestion which was universally panned, and so it wasn't implemented, but I've then seen it done at Catalina Island, among other places, and they don't have a problem with their wildlife coming into the more populated areas, which is providing a couple bins in the more wild areas of water to keep the animals at least, you know, able to find water in the areas that they're in, so they don't have to come searching for it in the more populated areas. What do you think of that? And is there any way to make that work, say, in a pretty unpopulated area of Griffith Park, for instance? Could that work and keep some of the coyotes and other wildlife in that location and not have them have to come down into people's homes looking for dog bowls and swimming pools full of water?
That's a great question. And if I can also go back to the other question afterwards, that'd be fantastic. Now, when it comes to water, actually, talking to some of the rangers, they say that there's a lot of pipes up there already that's leaking, that they could get water source from already. And then, also, the size of Los Angeles and how densely populated it is, there's actually no viable distance that we can set up a water station and keep them away from the residential. It's more food-related.
So, even in the most distant parts of Griffith Park, it wouldn't have that impact?
It wouldn't have that big of an impact. In fact, it would also lead to tampering with nature, meaning the animals would then use it as, because some of the smaller animals would be attracted to that water source, and so the animals would be almost just waiting, there's a term for it, I forgot. Yeah, and they'll just wait.
So, it'd be good hunting for the coyotes victims?
And it's all well-meaning. A lot of our decisions, it seems to me that, you know, we have big hearts, but unfortunately, wildlife, they'll take advantage of everything. Like you said at the very beginning, they're opportunistic and very adaptive, so they'll just take advantage. The key is to eliminate a lot of these attractants, and that should also eliminate birth rates and things like that.
And that's an interesting factor, because I think at Catalina Island, a lot of the water for wildlife, such as buffalo, so they're not animals that necessarily have other animals that are their easy prey for, so they don't have as much of that potential problem.
Plus, the density of Catalina, too, where ideally, I think they have a good combination where the wildlife knows to stay wild and stay away from the residents, because there's no need to go into those areas. But if you add more people, add more garbage, add more, unfortunately, smaller pets, then the attractant might start to increase.
And the other question that was asked before?
Okay, so, going back to that question, as far as doing community outreach, we do quite a bit. The key part of your question was the number of attendance or a number of people that show up, and that averages from 12 to sometimes 50, depending on how hot the topic is. Now, when it comes to scheduling these meetings, the hard part is how to do it quick enough to remedy the problem. But then, if it's too quick, people don't have ample time to set up for the meeting like this. Everybody has their own lives. Now, if it's too far, I hate to say, but sometimes the problem solves itself. The coyote moves on. I've been doing a lot of patrols, and it seems to work out that way. Unfortunately, social media keeps the fire lit, things like that. But we've actually, my supervisor lieutenant Navarette actually brought up a thing a couple years ago about, we discussed this, too, about inviting the community to the shelter, having the shelter- the, to the shelter, having, having the shelter have something going on once a month, something like that, so that, that's something that they can look forward to. The, the website's not answering their questions specifically, because a lot of these situations are case by case, so they could bring their, their specifics to us. And that's something they could plan way ahead of time, if we have a date once a month.
Well, thank you. And because we're running out of time, I have a few more questions I could ask, but I think I'm, I'm going to take public comments. Thank you both so much. And I think because of the lateness of the hour, I apologize, we're just going to have to do one minute as speaker. Allison Samard to be followed by Mark Steinberg and Andrea Adelman. And you can all come up.
Hi. I'm Allison Samard from Citizens for Los Angeles Wildlife. You know, the first thing I want to point out is, let's remember that a coyote sighting is not a coyote problem. Where I live in Los Angel, in Laurel Canyon, which is much more rural, you know, we cite, we see them a lot, but they're much more well-behaved. In Laurel Canyon, we live in the hillsides, we live among the wildlife habitat linkage zone, and we understand that the, we, we bring our dogs in at night, we understand that we may have raccoons if we leave out our food. But I also want to quickly, because I have 29 seconds left, address the idea of data. And we have to be very careful about that, because when I worked for the Mountain Lion Foundation, we would, three neighbors would report three, three mountain lions, but that didn't mean that there were three mountain lions, it meant that there were three neighbors. So, the numbers are something that we have to be very careful about. And what I want to commend the Animal Services is, it's really important to have an extremely independent person being able to acknowledge these. I wish I had more time, I have so much more to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I'm sure we will revisit this question again and try to take more time the next time. Mr. Steinberg?
First, gentlemen, I want to urge you to follow up on a question you got to, and that is, how many wildlife watches have been established? How many are there in the city? How many are there in your districts? Now, one of your members said something more than a year ago, and when I say one of your members, I mean a member of this committee, that the problem of aggressive and bold coyotes is a matter of public safety, pardon me, is a public safety issue. He said that. Now, I agree with him, and I also agree with Councilman Buscana's motion. I think it's a good idea to get a plan. The question is whether you have gotten a plan, whether what's been put in front of you is a plan. And I suggest to you that it is not. I have filed as public comment a document that I'm sure a number, a number of people have not read through, because it's pretty long, but I'm going to leave some copies of it here, if I may.
Yeah, I haven't seen it, so please, please do.
If it's all right.
Yes.
I'll try and get quickly to three points. One of them, there's no goal in this plan stated.
You're out of time, but I'll give you another, like, 20 seconds.
There is no goal stated in this plan. There is a wish, there is a hope, it's more like a country music title than it is a goal. Secondly, there is no measurement device. There is nothing that says how you are going to measure the department against a goal. And thirdly, there is a shocking lack of coordination in the department. There were 10 attacks on human beings documented by the Department of Public Service in Elysian Park over, over a period of just a few months last year, and the Department of Animal Services apparently didn't know about it. There needs to be a firm and obvious and detailed coordination plan amongst that department and others. I'll stop.
Thank you very much. Andrea Adelman?
Hi. I'm Andrea, I'm a resident of Los Angeles, and I live around the Largemont area. And I hear people constantly complaining about the coyotes coming into the area, but I also walk every night past cat colonies, 20, 30 cats, so we're basically inviting them in. After listening to what was said today, I think a good idea, just because I think education is the biggest thing we can do, trapping is not going to do anything, might be a mass mailing, just to residents, telling them to bring their food inside, bring their animals inside. It's not only feral cats, I see people letting their cats roam all day, they're waiting on the doorstep to come back in at night. We're basically inviting these coyotes and then getting angry when they eat the food we're leaving out. So, I'd hope that we would really focus on education and not in humane trapping.
Thank you. Lisa Lang or Lance, I'm not sure, it's a little bit hard to read, Dana Stengel and Randy Felich. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Lisa Lange, and I'm representing People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals. We have more than 100,000 members in the Los Angeles area and 100 employees in the Echo Park area. One of the things I, we support, everything LA Animal Services said, I think, though, beyond just keeping an eye on our pets, we need to bring our animals in, because as the previous speaker said, we're basically offering up a buffet to these coyotes and luring them into our cities. In answer also to something Mr. Harris Dawson said earlier, I actually live in Pasadena, so after the station fire, coyotes came down out of the foothills because we burned them out of their homes. And what our Humane Society did was posted, posted signs all over Pasadena and also did a mailing and, you know, hand-delivered information to the residents. I also did my own outreach in my own neighborhood where people were concerned, urged people to keep their cats indoors, to, you know, cover up their trashcans and everything else. And it did work very well. As soon as you make a food source less available, the coyotes will leave, and that's the only way to handle this. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana Stengel?
Hi. I am on the Sunland to Hanga Neighborhood Council. I am the chair of the Animal Issues Committee. One of our goals is to get animal issues committees into all of the neighborhood councils. I'm also the vice president of outreach. I do, my job is with a nonprofit that I founded. We do nothing but wildlife education and getting people to be able to coexist with our wildlife effectively. The recent studies show, the most recent studies about urban coyotes come from Cook County, they're done by the University of Ohio, and the researcher has found that urban coyotes are actually more successful than their rural counterparts, as they have no predators. The answer is the three Rs. Reduce the resources, restrict their entry, and retrain the current population of coyotes. And that's easily done with penny cans or air horns. Easy, effective, cheap, and just as effective as a gun. In fact, more so, because when you kill them, they're opportunistic and they will fill the holes that are left. As many resources are there, that's how many coyotes will be there, no matter how many you kill. Thank you.
And I actually, because my district is particularly full of coyotes, I keep an air horn in my car, in case I need it at an opportunity. Randy Felich?
Very well said. Good morning, council members. My name is Randy Fylish, and I'm the volunteer Southern California representative for Project Coyote. Project Coyote is a coalition of scientists, wildlife biologists, educators, and volunteers such as myself. I'm also a property owner in Los Angeles, although I do reside in the city of Calabasas, where we have developed our coyote management plan. Project Coyote supports Los Angeles Animal Services and General Manager Brenda Barnett's recommendation for coexistence and education in the proposed coyote management program. We thought it was excellent. We, we support a proactive plan that emphasizes public education, effective behavior modifications to reduce conflicts between people, pets, and coyotes. Through our coyote-friendly management community programs, we provide free services to cities and towns throughout North America, including recently San Francisco and, as I said, my city of Calabasas. We offer our services, free materials, and expertise to the city. We also support California Fish and Games Wildlife Watch Program.
And I'll, I'll ask you a question, but I'll give you about 20 seconds to answer. You're familiar with our program? Is there anything that's significantly missing from our program that could be added?
I thought that your program was excellent. I think Brenda Barnett did a phenomenal job in putting it together. The main component is going to be, as both of you had cited before, is going to be education and outreach. Most people are unaware that they are unintentionally or intentionally feeding wildlife, and it has to go back to the basic principles of behavior modification. And I think with that education, I think that, that you guys can become, because my last sentence on here was, the city of Los Angeles has become a model and a leader in environmental stewardship, and so have you, Councilman Corret, in the ban on trapping and the most recent wildlife corridor motion. So, I believe Los Angeles, right now, has the opportunity to really be an environmental steward here.
Thank you.
I brought you three copies of some materials that I had sent, but I'm going to give you the-
And we will happily take them. Last speaker, Susanna, Susanna Farin, I believe. If I mispronounced that, you can correct it.
You were right on. Farin is perfect. So, I had a much longer thing prepared, but let's just say, I'm Susanna Farin. I am a licensed marriage and family therapist and also an eco-therapist. Living in Sunland, I've lived in Mount Washington, I've seen a lot of coyotes. And I really want to emphasize, I mean, we've talked about why the, the lethal management just, just doesn't work. And I really want to press for a really lively, inclusive, and widespread educational campaign that addresses people's concerns and empowers them to reduce negative encounters with coyotes and other wildlife while protecting our already stressed ecosystems. The educational messages can work through animal organizations, schools, and media, community groups, parks, to get the word out. I mean, I think of other campaigns that have been really successful, like Spay and Neuter Your Pet, Click It or Ticket, Share the Road, Only You Can Prevent Forest Fires. And this has just become part of our language. And I think that a really well-done educational campaign can do the same, so. And you'll have, you have, you have a lot of volunteers who are willing to work on this, so.
Thank you. And we've run out of time. I think we've had a lot of good thoughts, but I'm not sure we've completely exhausted this subject or come up with any additional obvious suggestions. So, I'm going to hold this in committee. I'm sure we will have a further hearing, talk to more experts, and see if there are any things that we can add to the program. Certainly, a push to expand our education is, is the one obvious place that we should be looking at as we go forward. So, thank you all for being here. I believe that exhausts our items for the day, so that being true and seeing no public comment, we are adjourned.